All right, well, let's call the the meeting to order, the Board of Supervisors and Township Performances for Thursday, November 19th. May we all stand for the
Pledge of Allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our dedicated citizens and military personnel serving overseas. Okay, thank you very much. Announcements. I guess I'll go first. I have one announcement, saying that Mascaro has informed us that they are 48 hours or two days behind in the yard waste collection, so everyone please be patient. They will, they will get to it and get caught up. And thank you for your patience. And that's all I have. Kathy?
I have no comments tonight, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mark?
Chair, I just have a couple of short announcements. I know we're really involved in this heavy COVID outbreak and help, I got to help everyone that comes in contact with it and everyone be safe. And I want to remind everyone still that November is Men's Health Awareness Month. So let's not forget about men's health issues such as colon, rectal cancer, and things like that. If you have any symptoms or issues, please call your doctor immediately. And today is also, actually remembered, pancreatic cancer. And you know, that's a, that's a real killer. We lost Alex Trebek recently from that, and I have a family member that I lost to that very young age several years ago. So let's keep that in mind also along with the COVID. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Judy?
Nothing except that November is also Autistic Awareness Month. So I would like people to remember those with sensitivity that have autism and children that are growing up trying to learn with that autistic sensitivity issue going on in their family.
Okay, thank you, Judy. And Mary?
Good evening, everyone. The library is offering a variety of online programs in the coming weeks. Make sure to check out the programs as well as the highlights and register on their website There is a Civil War Christmas on Monday, 12/7 at 7:00 p.m. Before the Civil War, Christmas was not an official holiday in the United States. By the end of the war in 1865, Christmas had gone from a relatively unimportant holiday to the opposite, a day rooted in idealized vision of home. Come join historical reenactor, lecturer, and tour guide Michael Jurzberger for a discussion. This is for adults. Also, an unplugged coding on Monday, 12/21 at 4:30. Ms. Anne will lead in some fun unplugged coding activities on Facebook. Join anytime that week to learn the lessons and basics of computer coding. That is for school-aged children. And also, the Percy Jackson Virtual Book Club on Tuesday, 12/22 at 3:30. Calling all demigods, join for once a month for a 30-minute virtual book discussion on one of the Percy Jackson books, followed by a related craft. December's book is The Last Olympian, and this is for teens and tweens. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, moving right along. I don't believe there's any presentations tonight, so we'll move to land use matters, public hearings, and ordinances. We will start with the 2020-02-4 York Road Conditional Use Decision Order, and I will turn that over to Amanda.
At your previous meeting, the Board of Supervisors voted to approve the conditional use application of 2020-02-40 York Road, and the solicitor's office has prepared the conditional use decision order for your review and approval this evening.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. So is there a motion to approve the the conditional use decision order? So, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any, any comments, questions? Okay, any from the, from the email, I guess? Okay, and anyone from the audience in the meeting room? No? Okay, so let's call a question. All in favor, we'll start with Kathy.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Okay, next is to rescind the ordinance number 7642020, the note that, and I will have Mr. McCauley give us a description and discussion of this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for coming in at the last minute and throwing a wrench into the works. However, I think the board will be pleased. I think the board will be pleased that, that I did stop the closing on the banknote. And the township can obtain funding through the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority, which is, which will result in a savings on the 8.5 million, a result in savings of $1,134,553 at a rate of 1.278, and that's as of that's November 19th, that's today's rate. Levelled dead for 20 years as opposed to 1.7% for 10 years with a reset after 10 years and a cap of 4.5%. So what this resolution will do is give be a document to provide the Department of Community and Economic Development so they don't, excuse me, so they don't hold the, so they, so they remove the 8.5 million that was previously approved by the ordinance, 764. And then we can move forward with an application to Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority, if you so please.
Thank you, Bill. And this was the, when we originally went through this, I believe I asked this question to, to the previous township manager and to PFM and asked them if they had reached out to the Delaware Valley Regional Investment Fund. And I know PFM said they had not, and we got a somewhat truncated answer from, from our manager. So let me get this straight. So if we rescind this and then move to a different finance or financing avenue, we'll save, the township will save $1,134,553. That's, to me, that's, that's, that's a no-brainer. But I guess we need to have a motion.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I move that we take back the original 764 ordinance that we passed last month and supply it with new ordinance that includes the $10,000, the $10 million debt for, from Delaware Valley.
I think right now we need to just rescind the ordinance. I think that'll come up under New Business.
Chairman, I think all you need to do is, is enact the resolution that you have before you. That will actually take care of those. When you adopt, when you adopt the new ordinance for the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority, you'll also be repealing, repealing ordinance number 764 again. But this is just for the record, to make it known that you want to stop the closing on the banknote.
Okay. So Judy, that's, that you moved to rescind the ordinance for the note that?
I'm to rescind the ordinance. I second.
Resolution.
You're moving to accept the new, the resolution that was, that we prepared. So why don't we just move a resolution of the Township of Warminster, County of Bucks, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, directing township staff and professionals to not close on the general obligation note, Series 2020, and expressing its intent to rescind ordinance number 764. There's the whereas clauses, but that's what it does.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any, any questions or comments from the board?
Just one, Mr. Chair, with your permission. I fully support the resolution, by the way. Are we out any fees? Did we pay any upfront money toward that loan application that we're gonna, that we're gonna lose? Do we know?
As far as I know.
I fully support the resolution. I'm just asking.
That said, that there were no fees until we, unless we closed on it. Okay, okay, understood.
I have some comments, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I, I just wanted to say, I strongly agree with this proposal. It shows that we are being financially sound, which is what we promised the residents. So we're saving money for the township, which, which in fact saves money for the residents. And it's a great proposal. And Mr. McCauley, I want to thank you for, for looking into this and giving us another option to save money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, and if there are fees, and you know, I would imagine, Mark, if there are fees, they're minimal at this point, and
Can I, can I answer that also? There may be, we had, the bond council was working on it, there's some hours, there could be, it could be $10,000 out there, maybe 15, I don't know, I'm just being generous, 15,000 maybe potentially, but you're saving well over a million dollars. But, so that's potentially the only exposure. So that's, I want to be as forthcoming as I can with the best answer I can come up with for you.
Yeah, the, the cost of issuance, the on the banknote were $55,000, PFM and the bond council. So we're gonna have to settle up, settle up with them, but I can assure you, you'll have a savings of 1.1 million. You have to pay bond council to get out of this bad deal.
Okay. Thank you.
You have a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, so any, any question or any comments? Not questions, but comments online, Amanda? Okay, is there any in the audience room? Okay, so with that, I will call a question. Kathy? You're on mute.
Aye, Mr. Chair.
Mark?
Mr. Chairman?
You said aye, Mark? Okay, thank you. Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Motion carries 5-0, and that's a heck of a savings. And I'm glad we had the opportunity to, to look further into this. I know I wanted to do this quite, I asked this question several times, and I never got a satisfactory answer. And here we go, here, there's the answer. So thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move along to public comment. So Amanda, would you like to read the, the public comment?
There are three public comments this evening, the email, and then there is one person in the room as well. So to start with the email ones, from Diane Meyer from 612 Beaver Run. During the pandemic, library programs have become increasingly important to many of us, especially seniors. I'm very concerned about the cuts to the Warminster library programs that are proposed by the new town manager. My understanding is that the impending cuts would mean cancellations of some library book clubs that are held remotely via Zoom. That is very disturbing because the book clubs are the only safe way for many of us to connect with the community. As we face this dark winter and the isolation caused by COVID, the library book clubs are a lifeline for those of us who are homebound. Please don't cut these programs, we desperately need them.
Thank you for your comment, and I don't believe we're cutting any programs.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, please.
The, the only thing the, the only thing that the new town manager has done, there was one request for hire, which I tabled because the township doesn't know how much money it has on hand because of the problems with the finance department. There haven't been any cuts. As a matter of fact, the library director came in and asked me about closing the doors and going to curbside service, and I said I would take it under advisement. But I, I did not close the library, so this is misinformation about library cuts. The, we haven't got into the budget process yet, and I don't know what happened there, but there haven't been any to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, please, Amanda.
The next comment is from Sharon Johnson at 839 Meadow Wood Lane. Please explain the funding slash spending freeze for the Warminster Library.
Okay, thank you. I believe we answered that.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The final comment is from Robert Boyden. He lives at 670 Cheryl Drive. I've lived in Warminster Township for three years now. In that short period of time, we've had our neighborhood shot up by a neighborhood coop damaging my vehicle, a major drug house raided across the street. As a retired police officer, you need to apply more funds towards public safety. Having said that, how is it that neighboring communities are doing well financially while Warminster struggles? I have suggestions. Sell the golf course, sell the sewer and water authority, and cut parks and recreation in half. It doesn't take a fiscal genius to responsibly deal with financial woes of Warminster. Thank you and look forward to you addressing my comment in public.
Okay, thank you for your comment. And so you've been here for three years. And just for your edification, as of January 1st, 2017, we had a $5 million surplus in the general fund. And by the way, the general fund, 90% of the general fund goes to public safety. So we had a $5 million surplus, and in three years, we, we now run a million-dollar deficit. And the reasons for that are that we have a $14 million revenue stream and a $17 million spending spree, which we are putting, getting under control. You know, we've adopted, not this board, but the previous boards have adopted budgets with deficit spending, which is actually against the second-class township code, where you need to adopt a balanced budget and not use surplus funds to do that. So, you know, the other thing we didn't want, don't want to do is sell our revenue, or sell our assets, because when, when you continue to spend $17 million and you only have a $14 million revenue stream, it won't take long to use up all that money from the assets. So what we plan to do here and what we're moving forward with is, is controlling our spending and balancing the budget, so that we won't have to sell, sell our assets. And, and we continue to focus, and, and our police chief and our police department do a wonderful job, by the way. We can't control people that are unstable mentally or, or selling drugs, but we, we do have, our police do a great job to control that, actually. We can't, we can't stop it, but we can certainly control it, and I think the police do a wonderful job. Thank you.
The last public comment should be coming from the public meeting right now.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Janice Charlton from Lemon Street in Warminster. I'd like to welcome Mr. McCauley. Thank you so much for finding money for our township. I have a question, if it's possible, since we, last meeting, we were talking about taking a loan out for the parks, the park program. Is it possible to use some of that funding for that project so that we don't have to take a loan?
That's actually what the funding is. We're, we're actually financing it through a different organization to save 1.1 million.
Okay.
So that money will go to the park project.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. No more public comment?
Correct.
All righty, so let's move on to the consent agenda, and I will hand that off to you again, Amanda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, consider approval of Board of Supervisors minutes dated October 15th, 2020. B, consider approval of Board of Supervisors minutes dated October 29th, 2020. C, consider approval of Resolution 2020-33, appointing interim township manager as the chief administrative officer of the police slash non-union pension plans. D, consider appointment of the interim township manager as the right-to-know officer for the Warminster Township. E, consider appointment of interim township manager as Assistant Township Secretary. F, consider appointment of interim township manager as Assistant Township Treasurer. G, consider 9/11 York Road Lot 2, the townhouse aside, release number one from escrow account in the amount of $239,175. H, consider Buck's Beatles release number one from the escrow account in the amount of $62,552.25. Consider Street Road Industrial Park Lot 17, release number three, final, from the escrow account in the amount of $22,871.40. J, consider the future, release number four, final, from the escrow account in the amount of $16,082.00. Can I have a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll, I'll move. I move to approve.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, I, I do have one, one comment that I guess it's appropriate to bring up right now, considering that we're appointing the interim township manager as the Assistant Township Secretary and the Assistant Township Treasurer. And we did appoint Mr. McCauley as interim manager at our last meeting. But I just want to refamiliarize the board, if I may, with the second-class township code. I know sometimes these things are missed when we go to PSATs. Sometimes we don't go to the, the meeting that covers this type of stuff. But I'm just going to quickly read a couple things. So Section 1301 says, "The Board of Supervisors may hire a township manager and may delegate to the manager any and all non-legislative powers and duties via ordinance." Section 1-106, Township Manager is the Chief Administrator Officer, Administrative Officer of the Township. The Township Manager holds all non-legislative powers, responsibilities, and duties relating to the general management of the township's business, not expressly conferred on another township official or employee. Third, the Township Manager supervises and directs all municipal departments and employees in those departments. And lastly, the Township Manager has the authority to discipline township employees. So I, I want to summarize this, just so, so everyone's clear on the board. So as, as the supervisors have delegated the non-legislative powers to the township manager, supervisors do not have the authority, and I'll repeat that, do not have the authority to direct the action of any township employee. That, that authority is, we delegated that authority to the township manager. So I, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that's in the second-class township code. I wanted to make sure that everyone refreshed their memory on that. So thank you very much. Any other?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't know I was getting all these extra jobs. I would have negotiated for more money had I known that.
Well.
But I guess, I guess I'm locked in now.
Yeah, sorry, Bill. We got you now.
And I already signed, I already signed three right-to-know requests, so you better, you better do that one.
Bill, I think you're gonna have plenty of opportunity to hit them up for some more money in the coming days. We have a really uphill battle to climb, uphill to climb.
Fair enough.
Any, any other questions or comments? Any from the audience or online? No? Okay, so let's call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Okay, so the financial report, I believe that would be you, Mary, correct?
Yes, it is. So the approval of the bill list for period ending November 19th, 2020, first would be the supplemental bill list dated October 29th, 2020, in the amount of $550,238.4. And second would be the bills list dated November 19th, 2020, in the amount of $1,066,442.53.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the bill list for the period ending November 19th, 2020?
Motion?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions or comments? Any none, any questions or comments from the, from the public? No? Okay, so let's call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Nice to move through the township business with not a lot of fanfare and political fodder. Okay, so unfinished business, this is the budget discussion, and you know, I just want to, just want to say, you know, Mr. McCauley's been brought in at a, you know, at the last minute here. And we have all the faith in the world that he'll be able to, to meet our objectives. And I will turn this over to you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, I just wanted to explain the, excuse me, the change in the, in the schedule for budget adoption. And it's, it's going to be very challenging preparing a 2021 budget, because I don't have a 2019 audit of financial records. The, the audit has just started, the 2019 audit yesterday, and they're, they're still making adjustments to 2019, so I haven't, I have unaudited final numbers, but they're still being, they're still being adjusted, so it's going to be a little challenging. And we haven't, I, I think we've reconciled, talking with Mr. Wiesner through September 30th, and I'm trying to get October 31st year-to-date numbers. So with that said, I tried to buy as much time as I could, so I'll be present, I'll be giving you, I won't be presenting, I'll be giving you the budget and numbers itself, December 1. Then it'll be advertised for, available for public inspection, and I'll make a full-blown budget presentation on December 22nd. And, uh, I'll make a, uh, full-blown budget presentation on December 22nd, uh, with all the bells and whistles, charts, and, um, uh, uh, ca- council can, uh, consider adoption, um, uh, on December 22nd. So, uh, I, I just wanted to, um, apprise everybody. I, I did, um, I did tell ca- uh, board, I can't say council, I have to say board now. I did tell the board about the change in the-
The board of supervisors.
Thank you. I did, I did, uh, tell board of supervisors, um, about the change in the meeting dates. We will, uh, we will re-advertise, uh, those, those dates and, um, uh, move forward, um, as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McCauley. And, uh, without getting into specific numbers, I understand there's a, uh, a, a very large, amount of, um, money that needs to be transferred from the escrow accounts to the general fund, which might help us a little. Every dollar counts at this point.
Exactly. We, uh, uh, Mr. Wiesner, uh, just, uh, completed reconciling 2019 ES, uh, 2019 escrows and, um, the unreconciled balance of the general fund at 1231, 2019 amounted to 834,870.50. So that, that's, um, that's good that that cash is going to be coming into the general funds. But, uh, it, it should have been there, uh, a lot sooner. And we, we're just in the process of reconciling the escrow, escrow funds for 2020. So, um, it, it could be a number, it could be a number close to that, um, or even somewhat, somewhat less, but that one is going to be transferred, um, going to be transferred over, uh, also.
Okay, thank you.
I have a comment, Mr.-
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Sorry.
Certainly. Why wasn't that money transferred in 19? I don't understand how this, how this happened. I mean, I know, I know you just arrived. I mean, have you come to a conclusion by how this happened?
Um, for certain, it was not my fault. Um.
So you want me to be very candid, Mark?
Yeah, please. I, I, I think I, I-
I, I would have to say that, uh, this, this is, this is, uh, the, uh, we, we were making decisions earlier, uh, this year based on things that we were not aware of, uh, having, having a half picture. We didn't find out, as I said before, and, and I don't believe you did either, um, that we were not reconciled in 2019 until right after Labor Day, our first meeting in September. That's when I was made aware of this. So, uh, uh, you know, quite honestly, I would have to say it's gross incompetence. And, and I leave it at that.
Uh, I have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Certainly, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, I had made a, uh, I had asked, uh, a couple of meetings ago under the previous, uh, township manager, when we had seen the original budget and it showed a deficit, why we couldn't have a balanced budget without a deficit. We all know in our own homes and businesses, you can't, you can't operate on a budget, you, on a deficit. You have to pay your bills. So I'm glad that we have somebody financially responsible that's going to have a balanced budget without a deficit. Thank you. That's my comment.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I think I can address, um, address the, uh, the question. The, uh, the process of escrow account reconciliation and related cash transfer was turned over to the finance department in January of 2019. However, the fund was never fully reconciled since it was completed by Major and Escrow, uh, two CPAs, uh, for December 31st, 2018. And, uh, it, for whatever reasons, it didn't get done.
Thank you. And, and, and again, for whatever reasons, this board and, huh, and, and the board that we, we replaced, uh, we're not, uh, informed of this yet either. So, um, it, it's unfortunate, but, uh, uh, let's look at, uh, move on and on the upside. Um, at least we have, at least we're not owing anyone anything. We have, uh, uh, 838,000 plus 2020, which could be over, you know, total over a million dollars in, in total for the two years, coming into the general fund, which, which takes, uh, it doesn't solve our problems, obviously, because we still spend 17 million and take in 14 million. Um, but it, but it'll give us a little more breathing room, than, than we thought we had. Uh, when Mary and I were going through, uh, these meetings, um, I thought I was going to need another open-heart surgery, um, with some of the options that were, uh, the, the only choices that we were, were given. And, uh, trust me, I was not looking forward to that again. I, I, I swear I would never do that again. But, uh, uh, you know, I had, uh, uh, many sleepless nights. I lost some more of my, uh, my thinning hair and, uh, you know, it was affecting my health because I do care about this township. You know, it's as simple as that. Um, but, but I'm glad to see that, uh, you know, we're starting to see, uh, you know, we're not around the corner yet and there's no light at the end of the tunnel, but I, I, I feel much better now that, uh, we're, we're moving forward. And, and, and people are doing their jobs now, uh, which really, um, really what it comes down to. Our expectations from our employees are that they will, uh, as Bill Belichick says, as much as he's hated in this area, just do your job. Um, and, and that's what our expectations are of, of our, of our employees. So obviously that wasn't happening. So, uh, thank you, and, uh, we can move on from that. Um, is there any other, I don't think there's any more unfinished business. So, uh, we can move on to new business. Uh, we're going to consider the request for abatement of penalty and interest on delinquent business privilege tax by, uh, Joe Fit LLC in the amount of 670, 670.58. Amanda, I'll turn this, uh, over to you. Everyone saw this in the package, uh, but go ahead. You can, uh, explain this.
Um, you've previously seen other requests for abatement of penalty and interest on delinquent taxes due to COVID and filing issues. Um, in the past, we've recommended that you do not accept, um, giving an abatement to any of the businesses, and we continue to make that recommendation if you would like.
Okay. Do we, do we have a, a motion? So the motion would be to either, um, allow or deny the abatement of a penalty and interest?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we deny the abatement.
I'll second it. I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Um, uh, any other questions or comments?
Just a comment. I mean, it's unfortunate. I understand people's hardships, but we just can't, as we all know, we, some things we just can't do, you know, and unfortunately, we can't. I get it.
Yes, I, I understand. And, and, uh, you know, we, I agree with you 100%, but, um, you know, uh, unfortunately, it was filed late and, and, uh, along with everyone else at five. So, uh, okay, any other questions or comments?
No, I just want to say I, I, I made the motion, but I do feel badly that we can't afford to, you know, abate everybody's taxes and penal penalties and interest because of COVID, but we can't do it, so. We can't do it for all, we can't do it for one.
That, that, that's correct. Any, uh, questions or comments from the, uh, from the public? Amanda? No? Okay, so let's call the question. Um, Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries to deny the abatement of penalty and interest 5-0. Thank you. Okay. Um, request proposal of 2021, uh, tax anticipation note. Um, I will turn this over to, uh, to Bill, Mr. McCauley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, board actions in order. Uh, we're going to, uh, we're going to circulate the RFP for a 2021 tan with the, uh, with the goal of, uh, not, not using one because it cost us, um, uh, I think it was 22,500 last year. We're only looking for 1.5, um, uh, this year, so it would be, it would be less, but, um, uh, quite honestly, that's, uh, $15,000 that we, we don't have. So if we can, um, if we can figure out a way to, uh, to avoid doing so, we will. But, um, I know Mr. Wiesner wanted to, um, wanted to get out the, uh, RFP, uh, just in case.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Bill. Um, so is there a, a motion to, uh, request, uh, uh, request proposals for the 2021 tan?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
Uh, any questions or comments? Uh, the only comment that I have would be that, uh, I would agree with, uh, Mr. McCauley that, uh, our, um, our goal is to not, uh, have to use the tan, um, and, and, um, and save ourselves the, the money that, that it would cost to actually, um, to initiate that. So, uh, with, with any, uh, questions or comments from the public? Okay, so, well, with that, let's call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. All right, moving right along. Uh, application to the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority for, uh, capital projects. Uh, considerations to take appropriate action, and I will hand that over to you, Mr. McCauley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think, uh, the, the board's, uh, familiar, uh, with this item. And, um, I, I would, I would ask, uh, uh, this authorization would replace the 8.5 million that council, um, uh, rescinded their action on, uh, for the bank note. Uh, I'm, I'm looking, um, for authorization to make application to the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority, uh, to replace that money. And we may actually take, um, some additional money. I keep finding, yeah, these projects, um, uh, park lighting, uh, some other capital, uh, items. Uh, driving around the township, I, I think it, I think it, you need to, uh, pave some highways. Uh, today's, uh, today's rate, uh, the original rate I got was 1.405. Uh, today's rate for 20-year level, level is 1.278. And, um, you're not, you're not ever going to have a, a better time. Uh, when, when we come back to, when we come back to you, uh, with an ordinance, uh, we'll have, um, uh, zeroed in on those additional proj- uh, those additional projects and, um, and I would think it would be in the, uh, 10, in the 10, 11 million, uh, area. And, um, uh, 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 board action, uh, is in order, please.
Okay, is there a, a motion to, uh, authorize application, um, for capital projects to the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority?
Yeah, I'll make the motion since I tried to earlier.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any, uh, any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public?
No.
Okay. Uh, I, I, I agree. And, um, you know, at the corporate level and, uh, anybody that, that runs or operates, uh, any small-cap businesses or, or works in large cap, everyone's restructuring their debt right now, uh, from the giant corporations like Exxon to, down to small companies like myself. And, uh, there, there's, there's no better time to do that with the interest rates where they are. Uh, so with that, um, I'd like to call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Uh, part D, another application to, to authorize for finance, uh, of 2019 note? Is, is that the same thing?
Uh, no, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is a, a refinancing of a general obligation note, uh, 2019 series. Uh, the board barred 1,360,000, uh, in debt through a bank loan to fund the construction of a new sprinkler system at Five Ponds Golf Club in 2019. Terms of the note, uh, are for eight years at the fixed interest rate of, uh, 2.5%. Um, uh, this, we have the opportunity to, um, uh, to either refinance, uh, at the, and keep the eight-year, uh, payment schedule at 0.846. Um, as a gentleman under public comments, uh, mentioned, you don't need a financial genius. Um, and I'm not a financial genius, but I could tell you that 0.846% is better than 2.5. We would save, uh, we would save 98,366 dollars for 7.276% as a percentage of the refund of principal. But there, there's something further, um, I think you may want to, uh, consider, e- extending, uh, one of the, one of the questions I had was, why, why was the, um, why was the term only eight years? And probably because you went through a bank. Um, uh, but you can, um, you, you could extend the financing, uh, uh, 15 years and the interest rate would be 1.158%. And that would lower your, um, principal interest payments. And, um, uh, I think, um, uh, the golf fund owes the general fund 2.2 million. And in any kind of, uh, re- financial recovery with the township and the general fund, um, I would, I would hope that, um, the golf course would, um, would start being profitable and pay, and pay money on an annual basis to the general fund. So this will be easier to do if you go with the 15 years. But, um, uh, you know, we can def- we can actually make that decision, um, at a, at a later date, or you can make the decision now if you so choose.
So, um, uh, I, well, let's, let's, let's get a motion here first. Is there a motion to, uh, make application, uh, to, uh?
Refund the obligation note 2019, uh, series.
Yes. Okay. Is, is there a motion?
I'll motion. I make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so I guess the question is, um, if we, if we make this a 15-year note, would it be easier for the golf fund to pay back the general fund? Um, this note plus money, uh, on the 2.2 million that it owes the general fund? Because I've been asking about this, uh, since January when I took office, is when is the golf fund going to start paying back the general fund? Uh, I understand that, um, you know, you need to, to, uh, to, uh, get the golf course up and running. It, it is, it's, it's successful. Uh, they seem to be ma- uh, on the way to profitability. So, uh, if this would ease that burden, maybe the 15-year note wouldn't be bad. And, and in conjunction with the 15-year as opposed to the eight-year note, what's the life, um, expectancy of the sprinkler system? Because, um, you know, if, if the life expectancy is 15 to 30 years or, 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 or less, um, be, be anywhere between 50 and 30 years, why would you not finance this out in 15 years? Uh, would be my question.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, the expectancy is 15 to 30 years on, on the system. The previous system that was replaced was the original system from 1988. So this is even better system. So to, to your question, yeah, it's, it's 15, probably 20 to 30 years.
Okay, so, so why would we not, uh, extend this financing out to lower the payments to make it easier for the golf fund to pay us back, I guess would be the question. Is there any other thoughts on that?
It sounds like it makes common sense to do that. If they would be able to put the money back in the general fund, you know, since they are, uh, like you said, uh, profitable, and I think it would be easier for them to do that. So, uh, the other members of the board feel the same way. I think it's a good idea.
I, I, I honestly, I don't have a big issue with the refinance, to be honest, but the, the, at the time, the short term of- I I I honestly, I don't have a big issue with the refinance, to be honest, but the the at the time, the short term of it was that we could move on to other capital projects after that to get it paid off. But I totally understand why you'd want to refinance. I do. I I get it, but that that was the thought process at the time.
Right, um, I I understand that. Uh, but at the time, um, um, I believe we were um uh, looking to uh to pay back that note out of the uh the uh golf fund, which was actually two point two million dollars in the red at that time, correct?
But on on the debt service side of it, though, correct me if I'm wrong, um, a lot of the debt that was tied to that golf course many, many years ago before any of us were even a thought is come finally coming to an end. And I believe part of the thought process at that time is, okay, this debt's gonna drop off, and we'll be able to assume this and pay it off quicker. But if that's not the right, if the board doesn't feel that's the right path to go, I understand it. Uh, I'm just explaining the thought process at that time.
Yeah, I understand, Mark. Thank you. Um, I guess my thought process now is because we don't have a whole lot of money um, uh, to extend it out and make it easier for that golf the fund to pay the two point two million back, plus this uh this one point three six million. Um, so what whatever we can do to make it easier, um, and and you know, and 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 this doesn't inhibit you from from uh other capital projects. This actually just makes the payments lower, which which is um uh, you know, usually banks look at that, what your payments are, and um, and that's how they make decisions on whether it's how much money to lend you. So it it doesn't stop us from other capital projects, and and it does uh take some pressure off the golf um, the golf fund and the management of the golf uh operations. I mean, there's there's going to be no pressure taken off of them. Sorry, we still want our money back, but um, uh, anything we can do to uh um to make it easier, I I I think we should we should do that. Anyone else?
Can we call the question?
Sure. Uh, well, first, any any comments from the uh public? No?
Mr. Chairman, can I just uh a a couple um uh points of information? Um, and it was a great point. I I wish um, I I wish that the township had waited until the two point two million was repaid to the general fund to replace the sprinkler system, but that that's over, that's water over the dam. Uh, even with the fifteen years, the gross savings is on the re- refunding is twenty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars. Uh, the interest rate's one point one five eight percent as opposed to two point eight. Uh, you can't you can't go wrong. Um, you can't go wrong either way.
Well, I I disagree with the the replacement of the sprinkler system. That sprinkler system that was replaced had five major breaks last year with water pouring all over that golf course. It was in terrible shape and needed to be replaced.
Okay, so uh obviously, we we couldn't wait. Um, it would have been nice if we could, but we couldn't, so uh.
Everything, everything that I've seen is broken around here. You you fix it. Um, this might, the office that I'm in has uh has leaks in it uh over electronic devices. I mean, I, hey, I'm not going to debate the business sense of uh investing one point three six million into an asset that owes owes you two point uh two point two million, but um, uh, uh, I I don't I don't understand the uh the reasoning.
Okay, so shall we call a question? Uh, Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Chair votes, I motion carries five oh. Thank you, and it's nice to see that even over fifteen years, we'll still save twenty thousand dollars. Um, you know, so far, what I've seen um uh, looks like we have uh about one point one five million dollars in savings so far tonight, which is um.
Mr. Chairman, this is as good as it gets. I think it's probably time for me to uh to resign and take my leave now.
Okay, Bill. Uh, not that not that simple. So, all right, so um let's uh, we were going to um consider um an executive session now, but uh because uh there's no guarantees that the executive session would remain um private. Um, I just want to inform the board um that we are going to need to have an executive session um in the next day or two. Uh, obviously, we can't do it on the weekend, but either um very early next week uh or tomorrow, we all need to uh kind of communicate that when we can have that, but it's very important. We have a some business that we need to attend to in executive session. Um, and with that, we'll move on to professional reports, and we'll start with the Township Manager, uh, Mr. McCauley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank um, I just want to thank um uh everyone I've come in contact with with the township. They've been um exceedingly uh cooperative uh and helpful. Um, they they understand the um uh the objectives and um uh already implemented a um uh purchasing policy to uh get get a control over the um over spending. Spending spending seemed to be a little um uh, a little willy-nilly, a little out of control, and um uh without a whole lot of thought. And uh, I just want I just want everybody yet to to um requisition for their items, and we think about the um uh, whether it's a a need or a want, and um uh move forward from there, uh looking for uh looking for cost savings where we can. And that specifically, I'd like to thank um uh Catherine McGovern and Skye Seresso in the office here. They've been uh, they've been great. Uh, I uh I annoy them on a daily basis with um with recr- requests for information, for documents, and um uh, they they come up, uh, they come up with everything uh every time I ask, so uh I uh I just wanted to uh give them special recognition. Uh, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Bill, and uh we'll move to the solicitor's report. Um, Randy?
Well, of course, we, you know, in addition to our report that we've submitted, which anyone has any questions will be glad to answer. Uh, Scott was in court this week on behalf of the firm, and we successfully defended uh the township's ordinance uh against attack, the RFP, so um Judge Mellon uh threw a lot of cold water uh on the uh plaintiff's arguments. We were defending it along with uh both counsel, and uh the the judge basically said, this is common, this ordinance. Townships have it, they're legal. Um, you followed your ordinance to the letter, and uh he denied their injunctive release and relief and basically threw out their case, but the case technically is still there, but it's uh on life support at this point. So, thank you, Scott, and uh, if anyone has any questions, we have nothing else.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Flagger. Uh, just to uh reiterate that, that the the judge uh agreed that we um we did nothing more than enforce uh an existing RCO, and it was per uh um within our rights to do so. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, absolutely. Um, yeah, they didn't qualify. I mean, you can't um there are there are things that you need to do or or certify to um and they have to be truthful, and um this board awarded it to various bidders, and none of them could qualify. Finally, we found a a bidder that was qualified, and we award this board awarded that contract to that that uh that contract uh and the judge upheld your actions.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, any other questions or comments for this listener?
I just want to say thank you to uh Scott and 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 Randy for a job well done.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move it over to Mr. Kenner. Been relatively quiet tonight.
Hey, that's the way I like it. Saves you a lot of money too, right? Right, Bill? Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have our November uh November's engineers' report. The only uh the only item I'd like to add or comment on is um the Nifty Fifty's uh restaurant uh over at Warmminster Plaza on York Road. Uh, they'll be uh, they went through planning commission, and they'll be on one of your meetings in December. I'm not sure which one yet. Uh, that'll be to be determined, but uh that'll be your next land development application that you see um at one of your meetings in December. Um, outside of that, I'd like to also uh uh, not that it was, I'll say enjoyable, but um Randy and Scott did a great job on the uh recent litigation with the park project. Uh, Aaron from my office worked with Scott uh a lot, and I appreciate uh her efforts as well. Um, so we'll be uh moving forward on that. Uh, Scott and I spoke yesterday, I believe Aaron as well, and uh we'll start moving forward again with the park project. Um, one other note is uh Mr. McCauley and I spoke about the road program for next year. I'm always uh supportive of starting early. We've done that the last couple of years and trying to get the best prices you can and get paving and get the roads uh fixed up uh early in the year instead of waiting and uh getting in line for uh higher prices and longer delays. So Mr. McCauley and I spoke today about that, and my staff's already starting to work on that. And uh, one other note, I'd like to welcome Mr. McCauley. Uh, we spoke a few times, and uh I'm glad to see he showed up tonight for the meeting. I was a little worried uh over this last week, but um I'm glad he showed up on uh on one of the boxes. So welcome aboard. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I I have his check in my coat pocket.
While we're giving him the big head.
I haven't even been at my pillow. I got busy uh.
Mr. Chairman, while we're giving him a big head, my uh Adam, my son, is at the Bristol Township meeting tonight, and they announced uh the the last of the McCauley budget, the end of the McCauley budget. Bill, you you crushed them again with a, it looks like a couple million dollar surplus from last year in Bristol Township. So when you retired, you left them in good shape, so you should only do half as well here.
Well, we we hope so. All right, we'll 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 shrink that head back down in the in the next couple of months, trust me. Um, okay, so um I guess we move on. Thank you, uh, everyone, all our professionals for all your your wonderful work. Um, we we rely on you. Um, you know, we, you guys are the professionals. That's what we pay you for. Um, and so far, uh, everyone's been doing uh a a a great job for us, and we appreciate it, and thank you, and to your staff. Uh, all right, so um, the announcement of upcoming agenda items, uh, Mr. McCauley, I guess it's uh right now, it's just the uh the change in um uh meeting dates?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, December first and December twenty-second. December twenty-second will be the uh public public hearing on the uh proposed budget.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we'll go back to our second round of public comment.
There are no additional emails. Um, it doesn't look like anyone else is in the room either.
Okay, uh, I don't think this is the 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 record. I, oh, no, I think I had it at one in the early in my career here. Uh, we had one that was a little bit shorter, but uh it's nice to get through the uh the township business with um uh in 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 short order uh with minimal uh disruption, and I appreciate that, and uh I'm sure next uh couple of meetings um uh that'll all change with the budget, because that's what everyone's waiting for. So uh, uh, I I don't uh have any additional comments. Other than, I will say, I will I will uh piggyback on to Mark's comment about COVID. Um, if, uh, you know, everyone's uh, it's what we get bombarded with, first thing we see when we wake up, last thing we see when we go to bed. Um, but the numbers are astonishing, and and they just continue to get worse and worse, and I um, you know, I saw a a really nice uh letter to the editor in the Philadelphia Wire. I read that every day. Uh, not just the letter to the editor, but I read it page cover to cover um along with the intelligencer, and uh uh there was a a a doctor that um sent a letter in and said, if you think wearing a mask is uncomfortable, try a ventilator. So uh some food for thought there. Uh, this is real, and please be safe. Wash your hands, wear a mask. Uh, we want everyone in the township to be safe. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, first, I'd like to thank all our professionals, um, and um Mr. McCauley for your for your great leadership and and recommendations. Uh, I'm glad that we are on the road to financial stability, and I'd also like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Please stay safe, wash your hands, social distance. Uh, I heard some uh, one of the scientists, uh, infectious diseases made a very a great comment the other day, said, get together with a small table this year, so next year you can get together at a bigger table. And that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Kathy. Great advice. Okay, Mark?
Chairman, uh, I want to welcome Mr. McCauley, and I do wish you success, though. As successful as you are, as successful as Warmminster Township will be, so I wish you success and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And and Randy, I'm glad to see that you're a Beatles fan. I think that was your phone we heard?
No, it was mine.
Oh, it was Judy's. Okay.
Okay. Truth be told, truth be told, I'm a fanatical Beatle fan, but it was not my phone. I'm the right age to be a Beatle fan.
All right, awesome. And I just want to wish all of you and and the public a happy, very, very safe Thanksgiving. We're all, I think we're all going to be with immediate family from the sounds of it, and hey, there's nothing wrong with that either, you know? So as long as we're all safe and we're all healthy.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Judy?
Oh, just the same here. I want everybody to have a a healthy and safe Thanksgiving. Don't forget Dr. Fauci's word that even in, even with your family, when you're close together in close quarters, and there's a lot of you there, you need to wear your mask as uncomfortable as that may seem. Just because it's your family doesn't mean that they aren't carrying any kind of the disease. I read on the uh statistics today from each county in Pennsylvania, and it's five percent of the residents of Bucks County that are infected with COVID. That means one in twenty people that you know have COVID, and you don't know who they are, so be careful out there, okay?
Okay, thank you, Judy. And last but not least, is Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to say um a great big thank you to um the shepherd of Warmminster owner, Joe Calley, for implementing a two-dollar-an-hour hazard pay for all of his employees during this pandemic. Uh, he just recently re-implemented that, and I would like to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Um, and enjoy the time with your family.
Great, thank you, Mary, and that and that's a wonderful gesture. I that that that's nice to hear. The employers uh thinks that highly of his employees. That's nice to hear. Okay, uh, seeing as there's no more business of the township, uh, I would like to motion to adjourn. Anyone?
Commercial, come on.
I'll motion to adjourn. I don't want to.
Thank you. That was the easy one for the night. All right, everyone, be safe. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving. Stay safe. Stay safe.